All, turn on microphone. Good morning. It's just after ten o'clock. My name is Godwin Chan. I'm the deputy mayor of City of Richmond Hill. I'm going to chair today's committee of the whole. First of all, before I call him being to order, I just want to share with my colleagues. I just mentioned the mayor as well as our staff and members of public who are here and watching live stream. I'm very happy to welcome and listen to this two winners of the Greater Toronto Junior Mayor Contest. In the city of Toronto, some of us there also actually have held by election and elected a mayor, Charles, yet to take office. But today, I'm very pleased along with my colleagues here to welcome Shantiao Lang, who actually a resident in Richmond Hill, and also Jeffy Wong, a resident of York Region in our nearby. And as part of welcome, before actually I come to a chair of the meeting here, the chef of me, they have great ideas on waste collection, public transit, transportation, as well as affordable housing. So it shows that these two young persons, they actually have looked into, you know, how to become an electoral official at local level. So welcome. And this particular contest are being held by the Singtao Lios and the A1 Radio are serving the Toronto Greater Community. Thank you. Thank you all and welcome. So night now, I'd like to call them being to order. I'm glad to say, yes. I, oh, I do have a regret. There's empty chair, council new. And after that, the next item is for council announcements. Yes, council of syphilis.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and welcome everybody, especially to us two special guests. Welcome, welcome. Just a couple of important announcements. Firstly, on Sunday is the Ward Five Songs From The Hill Music Festival to be held at Mount Pleasant Park for six hours from 12 to six. We have an incredible lineup of musicians and artists who are going to be there. And everybody is welcome to at Mount Pleasant Park, which is just in front of the Lowes Hansi Center, Lowes Hansi Wave Pool. And I look forward to welcoming my colleagues and our residents and friends and relatives and all residents from all over York Region. So Sunday is the day we're back. And my second important announcement is happy birthday, Mr. Mayor. Everybody, happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Mr. Mayor. Happy birthday to you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm done.
Thank you very much. And thank you for sharing in public the information. Before I move on to Council Davidson, you want to say a few words? Birthday boy, Mayor Wes.
Well, thank you. Actually, it's that's very nice. Thank you very much. I just had a call from my mother as well. So apparently she's talked to me every single birthday that I've ever had. I suppose, including the first one. So thank you very much. I wanted to just talk quickly about a couple of things. I wanted to, first of all, congratulate staff on a really, really great Canada Day celebration that we had. I was up in, I mean, it was great. The park was programmed fantastic, better than I've ever seen it before. The crowds were great and the turnout was spectacular. But I also wanted to just mention, I was up in Oak Ridge when the storm hit at two o'clock. And you know, I thought it's raining pretty hard and so on. But apparently the storm hit much harder at Richmond Green Park and the staff responded quickly and was the show went on. And so thank you very much to all of the staff that were involved in putting that on. It was a great event. It looks really great on the city. And I really very much appreciate that. I did want to just also give a shout out that we just recently proclaimed July is Plastic Free July. And you know, this is a global movement to see if we can do what we can individually to reduce plastic consumption in our own lives. I'll certainly be doing that. It's not easy, but I think more and more people are starting to refuse to be using plastics whenever possible. And through those efforts, we're trying to reduce the amount of plastics in our environment. And I also just wanted to mention that three things that are happening in the near future in Richmond Hill. Concerts in the park are happening at the Mill Pond Park, Thursdays from seven to nine. It is a fantastic event every Thursday. Great lineup of fun and entertaining performers. And it's just a really great evening. Nothing can be better than a nice summer night at the Mill Pond. Rib Fest is happening from July 21st to 23rd. And that's always a real excellent event as well. A lot of fun to be had there. And Live in the Plaza happens Tuesdays and Wednesdays from seven to nine at the Richmond Hill Center for the Performing Arts in the Outdoor Plaza. So if you, if your dance card is not already full this summer, there's still lots of things that can be done. And these events actually are either low cost or free. So please enjoy, partake, you know, get out, meet some of your neighbors and you know, talk to somebody you don't already know, make a new friend and you know, have an enjoyable time at the same time. So thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
What, what do you say again? Thank you. But you know what? I do understand celebrating your birthday is an exciting thing, right? So we fully understand. And I hope Council Davidson don't mind. I have the birthday boy, Mr. Wes speaks first. So next is you. You raise your hand earlier.
I know. Well, I was going to say similar things, but I did want to say my first Canada Day as a councillor, looking at the grounds differently. I was just so excited at how many people from Richmond Hill came out and they support their community. And you don't need to leave Richmond Hill to have a great Canada Day. And it was, it was just really fun and it was great to see everybody. So I'm so happy that this community comes to events and will continue to support as a community the things we have to offer. That's all.
Thank you very much. And the other community members want to share any announcements? If not, I just briefly echo everybody who spoke about how wonderful our events team have been preparing for the event. And also when the weather didn't cooperate, they did the best they could. So the good news is good weather return. I think briefly the sun may be back. And I was told we have one of the hottest talents that in the musical world and apparently is also a native who live in Richmond Hill. So wonderful time. So if no further announcements, I just want to quickly recap. Today is a busy day. We have eleven gender items. As well, we have a number of delegates. So I'm now going with the order of the meeting. So any member want to introduce any time sensitive or emergency nature items now is the time. Seeing none, could I have a member of the committee move for adoption of today's agenda? Yes, council of syphilis move for adoption of agenda? Any discussion? All those in favor? Mr. Kirk is carried unanimously. So any disclosure of particular interest and thereof, nature thereof? Seeing none? Good. Next, I'm going to ask any member of the committee who should identify any other items on agenda who would need separate discussion other than the one is going to be discussed after the dedication? Any other item? Counselor Shield.
Thanks Chair. I would like to pull 11.3 Community Pickable Help Planning for separate discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other member want to put any other item? Seeing none, could I have a member committee move for a motion to adopt the remainder of agenda item other than 11.3, which has been pulled? 11.6 whereby we have 12 delegations? You moving? Thank you. So we have a motion moved by Council Davidson to adopt the remainder of agenda items or any discussion? All those in favor? Carry unanimously. Thank you. So today, I don't see we have any public hearing. And we don't have any presentation, but we do have delegations. So I would like to move right on. All the 12 delegations are relating to item 11.6, relating to a development proposal at 10684 and 1069 to Young Street. The first person is Max Haron. I hope I say your name right and please come to the floor. And you have five minutes to make your dedication. At the fourth minute, then you will see a bell, which meaning you have 59 more seconds to go. The floor is yours. Welcome.
It's worship David West and dear councillors. I'm the coordinator of Arton Avenue and Creek Avenue, the neighborhood which we are discussing today. I'd like to give you an overview of all the concerns we have. Although details of the concern will be governed by the individual neighbor regarding any specific issue. But I would like to categorize all these concerns and issues in two categories. One is related to the height and second is related to the emergency access. Let's talk about the height. The proposed height, as you know, is 25 story high. Although we believe that the current bylaw allows maximum of 15. But even so, we believe that even 15 is not appropriate. And I'll tell you why. Number one, a significant number of basement leakages have happened in the area. Now, not only in our neighborhood, but also in the commercial surroundings as well. Number two, is the existing traffic congestion at Major McKenzie and Young, Elgin Mills and Young. And this will cause a further congestion. I'm sure you are aware of that. Now, the most importantly is the potential congestion, which we are expecting at the intersection of Alguilme Mills and Creekview. Why? Because we feel, and I'll talk about it later. We feel that there will be a number of reasons why there will be additional congestion and traffic, if you like. One of them, of course, is people like to have a shortcut and so on, so forth. But second one, more importantly, is that emergency access will have a good pedestrian access. And people will willingly car the car, park the cars and go. So this will cause additional congestion. Number four, we believe being such a nice neighborhood as we have, the height, the potential height of this building will cause shadowing in the area, particularly people living surrounding the area. And that, of course, as you know, number five is the privacy concern of nearby backyards as well. Number six, which is really of high concern. And I don't know how this thing happened by the planning department, which is that the minimum protection zone, a buffer area at the moment is 10 meters. But somehow, the builder has managed to get zero buffer zone. Now, the issue is, well, normally maybe okay. But this building happens to be right in the flood plain and also very close to the water table. And of course, as you know, there's a creek going underground through the building and so on, so forth. So I believe that please review your potential zone of zero meter. In fact, what you're telling me, telling us is see that go ahead, do what you like. Finally, the foundation work of such a high-rise building will create a structural problems, not only in the building, but also surrounding areas and the settlement problems and so on, so forth. Now, let me talk about the emergency access. This type of access is an open invitation for visitors for building to park the cars on the street and go. So as I mentioned earlier, the potential traffic of Creekview and Alguilme Mills. Number two, parking congestion of Creekview and Arton as visitors to the high-rise will park their vehicles wherever they will get the spot. Number three, which is really something, actually you should look into that, but there is an intersection between built in Arton Avenue and Creek Avenue. Technically, you may not call it intersection, but I think for all intensive purpose, it is an intersection. And this elbow has been cause of many accidents in the past.
Miss Haron, you have five minutes up. You'd like to wrap up very quickly?
Sure, just in 30 seconds. Okay. The details of the traffic will be, was really analyzed between me and Rob Livingston, which will give you details later on. Now, having said all that, you see, it doesn't mean we are opposed to any development. We are opposed to any progress in the city. No, we welcome it. But please review in the point of, you know, the concerns I have given. And thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation, Mr. Haron. Next on the speaker's list is Christina Chao. I believe she's in person. Please come up. Now, your name appears again, but this one is for yourself, I believe. So you have five minutes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Godwin Chan, Shantiao Mayor David. Yeah, I was one of the delegate for the neighborhood. So I live right next door to that project. I remember two years ago for that project. I mean, many councillor, including David West, was thinking that that floor is way too high. And I checked what the project pulled before in the history in KDA area, only pulled 12 floor. But we, this time we get a 25 floor. That was way too high. And we have a lot of car accident, serious car accident near that corner. I see a lot of blind spot there. And recently officially, that floor storage is still like a 15 floor. So our all neighbor thinking this area only comfortable for like small project. And that, that, that land is a flat land. So it's a very, it's not even flat. It's creek used to build as creek. So it's a lot of issue, even the Max we already mentioned, like we have a leakage in the basement. We have a lot of fixed issue. And also, also it's, we prefer it's build like commercial building, couple of storages or like park or even one, one our like neighbors said we can become like one single house. It would be nice because the whole area, no tall building at all, at all. So, so we don't want this project to become one of exception in the area and make the area like it's so different from other area. And we are, this area is a high, like a low, low density area. And another thing is this builder, La Cebella, has never heard about them. They are no track record. So we heard about the recently, three years ago, there's project. They crashed three months, three months ago. Inagro Falls, it crashed only for storage, it crashed. Think about that in Richmond Hill. If any project crashed, there will be so many people died. How could, yeah, the city will fault of this responsibilities. So, so we think the credibility for the builder was so important, whether he can build this high-rise building, like 25 floor. Yeah. So thank you. That's, that's I represent myself. Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation for yourself, Ms. Christina Chao. You're also speaking on behalf of another resident, Yang Ning. So if you wish, you can begin five minutes for that particular third or actually separate dedication.
So, so I represent Yang Ning because she can speak English at all. But she really want to give her opinion. She said, building such a high-floor building is not, is not harmony in the whole area. In the whole area, you can say four storage or two storage, you don't even say much. It's all like a small plaza and all like a single detached. Even we don't have many townhouse, high-rise, like any apartment nearby that area. And he feel like when he buy this area, he likes this area because environment is so good, no high-rise and it's a very peaceful place. But since if you guys building this big project, the safety issue, security issue will create. And it's already in the neighborhood, we saw some people stolen car. So when you're building the affordable house, maybe there's more like a safety issue. And many kids on the street is very dangerous for handed density area. And thirdly, he proposes, he said, she said she don't want any entrance, any entrance on the Arton, that Creekview. It's a very tiny street. There is many school bars, always on the school time. They just park whatever, even people complain they parked there. And she also complained in the corner, that project, they never cut the grass, they never maintained. So that, 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 that project, you can go there right now. It's like, it's like, it's like a trash area. It's a mess. Yeah. So we don't know how they can manage this project very well. That's all, that's Yang Ning's concern. Thank you.
Thank you very much, that Ms. Christina Chao. And next on the speaker's list is Mr. David Jiang. It's, Mr. Jiang is going to join us virtually. So, Ms. Jiang, yeah, I see you. Now, if you turn on the microphone, the rule is you have five minutes for the dedication. So the floor is yours.
Okay. Thanks, everyone. Thanks for the council. Thanks for allowing me to join as a panelist. As a self introduction, I live right next to this project. And everyone can just imagine the horrors of, you know, invasion of the privacy, whether it's looking through our window or all the people walking by the emergency exit right in front of our house or right beside the parking lot at night. All the noises that's going to come in through the apartment building. So everybody can already imagine that and all the, all the shadowing, right? But I'm here to talk about something more important that's going to actually impact the community. So number one, the green space, right? It clearly violates the, like the green space ratio per person. This project, I don't know how that happens, but there's definitely not enough green space in our community or just in this street area alone, right? We need more of that and it clearly violates the environmental guidelines. Secondly, the flood risk. I think that's a high impact risk that we really need to assess. Not only because we already have existing problems that's brought on. Like we're already experiencing it and the city is not addressing it. And having this high-rise building, it's going to go deep, right? The foundation is going to be very deep. And of course, the settlements are going to be impacted. Then what's it going to mean for our community, right? The people living right next to the project, that's a high flood risk right there. You know, I would really love the city to outline if we were to experience another flood, who will be held responsible for future flood damages? Would it be the city or the builder for the lack of due diligence, right? I really hope the council will be able to provide an answer for that. And also lastly, and it impacts more than just our community, but the city as a whole. If you actually look at the site plan, the plan touches upon our drinking water system, our freshwater system. Right? So that needs to be looked at very carefully, right? I'm like, sure, it touches a flood plain. The flood plain is of course going to impact our freshwater system. So if that's on the site plan, then I would really hope we have an environmental study to be done to make sure that we protect our freshwater system really well by this project, right? However, they dig or how they protect it using foundations or how they not impact our freshwater system. I think that more than impacts just our community, but the city as a whole. So I really hope we can have a thorough study on the freshwater and how we can protect that vein as well. So that's it from me. Thank you guys very much for allowing me to speak. I'll pass it on to the next people. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Mr. Derek Jiang. Yeah, thank you for within the five minutes. And next, I'd like to ask Sharon Yon or maybe, oh, she's in person here. So Ms. Yon, the rule is that you have five minutes to make your presentation. The floor is yours. Welcome.
We understand that the city needs to grow and this project is too much for the community to handle. There is already not enough green space, like David Jiang just mentioned. Adding another high-density building does not solve the problem. So there's not enough infrastructure to support the already crowded young streets. The city, I think, should first consider to brighten, to broaden that young street area in the Old Town District first. One lane traffic is just not enough for such a high-rise building. So according to our research and study, the approved projects in Richmond Hill already satisfied Richmond Hill's city plan for the next 20 years. So I don't think adding another high-rise building will basically help anything like according to the existing infrastructure. So also like, he also mentioned the corner of Arden and Creekview is already a high flood risk area. We need the environmental, environment planning to do a full assessment of the whole area. Because according to the reports, the buffer, like the protection buffer was reduced from 10 meters to zero meter. So we have no idea why that happens, but also it's a very vulnerable area. And we have a lot of flood issue and also sewage issue and water issue in the past few years. So building such a giant building will basically, you know, kind of maybe jeopardize the situation even more. Additionally, if there will be a flood issue in the future regarding this building, who will be responsible for this? Is it the city or is it the builder? So as a neighbor, we really want to know like who will be the person that we will, you know, we can, we can go for help. The third one is building a high-risk, the vibrant, vibrance will impact our house foundations and settlements. We would like to affirm study before it's done because in our house during the construction of Young Street, it's already affected our settlements a lot. Because I already report to the city only because we don't have a technical study. So we were not being response. So I'm really concerned if like such a huge building, it's a very narrow land and it's a flood vulnerable zone. So building such a high-rise building will definitely affect our foundations. So and also like, last but not least, we held this meeting during COVID and none of the suggestions from the community was implemented. It's still the same plane, little things have been changed. The community is still opposite, opposed to this project. During our past conversations, I also learned none of the councillor or any, anyone who's really, really familiar with that area, with that, that land. So I really highly recommend you to walk around that land to see how big it is, like what's, what's the impact will be put in the community. I think that's a very right and responsible way before you're getting any improvement for that. So, yeah. And also like, please feel the constructions, congestions on Young Street in that area, also on Oxford Street during rush hours. I think that's very, very important. Before approve this building, just broaden the Young Street, just putting more infrastructure. And also we learned that Richmond Hill needs development. They need office, they need employment, they need. And also we learned that, um, Richmond Hill needs development, they need office, they need, uh, employment, they need, uh, leisurement. And we totally support that. So if that's the case, I highly recommend you build an office building or just, you know, restaurants or any infrastructures who help, like, which helps the city to, um, prosperous. Yeah, so that's my speech. Thank you.
Thank you for your dedication, Ms. Yon. Uh, next on the speakers list, uh, I have Omaya Farid. Is, uh, oh, yes, Farid is coming on. Hi, uh, Ms. Farid, uh, I see you now, uh, you can, uh, turn off your, or turn on your microphone and you have five minutes, so the floor is yours, Ms. Farid.
Yeah, thank you, thank you for allowing me to express my, uh, point of view on this, uh, new project. I'm living on, uh, one oh three Arton Avenue. And I love this neighborhood, it's, uh, it's great. This despite from the problem that we always have from that neck part of the road between Creekview and Arton, which is causing, uh, accidents and risk, very high risk for both pedestrians and uh, the cars, it's a very quiet, secure environment. Um, when I heard about this, uh, this new plan and, uh, the shape of the, the land that is used, I, what I was very much surprised. You know, the, the shape of this land is very strange, this little tiny narrow part that is, uh, um, is on, uh, Arton Avenue, I don't know how this happened, but anyway, now it's planning to be used as an um, emergency access area, which will allow actually all the traffic and all the noise and for this condo or this high-rise building to our street. Uh, it doesn't really matter if it is, uh, it's, uh, if it's only, uh, limited to emergency access and controlled maybe by some sort of, uh, electronic, um, gating or whatever. As long as it has a pedestrian access to this road, this will be definitely used as a parking area. And this is the experience with all of the, uh, high-rises, uh, they all claim that they have enough parking, but it is always full, all of the people will have at least two cars and they need extra parkings. And, uh, the visitor parkings are not, uh, sufficient. So people will come, park their cars there and just walk into the building. And also for the security of the people that are living in that road and they park, there, there have been some, uh, some recent robberies reported, um, and if there is a, if there is a path to the Young Street through that, uh, to, through that, uh, emergency access area, then this is out of control, you don't know who's walking in, who's walking out of this road. And, um, and also, uh, even if they want to, uh, build, uh, this high-rise, I would like to stick to the height that what, that is legally, legally approved. And that there must have been a good reason for all of the engineers and all of the different environment and, uh, specialists that they sit together and they created this bylaw. They decided the maximum of fifteen, there should be a good reason behind it, sir. Uh, I don't know why we are even considering twenty feet, twenty-five floors here in this region. It is, uh, it is, um, I, I believe this is, um, doesn't meet our, uh, essential right. We have to stick to the bylaw, I don't agree with any increase in this, um, height. And, uh, my concern, uh, as others mentioned about the flooding and also, uh, the, the, the point about the buffer zone is also, I agree with other neighbors. We all agree at the same, and I really believe that, uh, request for the committee to consider the, the request of this neighborhood serious and, uh, reassess the request.
Thank you, uh, Ms. Farid, and appreciate, uh, sharing your concern with us. And I'm going, thank you, uh, I'm going with our speakers list. Uh, Yu Wang, um, it's supposed to be online, uh, is Yu Wang here in person? It's not coming online. Um, I would call one more time for the next speaker or delegate, Yu Wang. Uh, hearing no response either in the chamber or. Okay, okay, so. No, no, uh, either if you wish, uh, you you could have Mr. Wong to come online, uh, which is your original register. Um, and, uh, I have to, in this case, uh, since he's absent either, uh, online or in chamber, I have to move to the next one. Uh, who is Robert, sorry, you have your chance to speak already, yeah. Robert Livingstone, Mr. Livingstone, and I believe, uh, supposed to be online, oh, in person. Yeah, welcome, you have the five minutes.
Thank you.
The floor is yours, Mr. Livingstone.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, happy birthday, councilors, uh, thank you for the opportunity to speak today. Uh, this past Canada Day, I was not only thinking about how lucky my family is to live in Canada, but also in Richmond Hill. We're free to voice our concerns here in council. Uh, not only that, I'm thrilled that every day I get to come to our tight-knit, uh, community, our Arden Creekview community. Uh, it's a diverse, engaged and hard-working community that we and you as councilors can be proud of. It's a neighborhood where we know each other's name, something that's increasingly rare. Um, that's why when we were given short notice that you were deliberating this application today, we were able to quickly and effectively spring into action to make sure it was done right. We have strong leaders, those willing to hit the pavement to rally cooperation and others happy to help in any way necessary. We have individual concerns as well with this project, depending on where we live on the street and how we're impacted. But on our street, we have each other's backs, we support one another and we speak with one voice. Understandably, you as councillor sees applications as a file, as, uh, images on a screen or on paper or numbers that try to tell a story, but we live that story, we live it every day, day in and day out. So we urge you to consider our concerns. I'll focus on that intersection that you've heard about on Arton Avenue and Creekview, the, uh, point where the proposed uh, emergency exit is to be connected. Um, my son, he's sixteen, he's just learning to drive, you can tell my hair is a little grayer than it used to be. But, um, he, when we pass that intersection, um, I always warn him, I say, you know, slow down, make sure you look. Uh, there's no warning signs there, there's no yield sign, stop or anything. I, it's a blind quarter, I say, be very careful, stop if necessary because it's dangerous. We, residents know, we already know this intersection is very dangerous, there's parked cars and buses. It's often a blind corner because of that, it's almost impossible to see oncoming traffic. Non-residents often drive too fast around the bend, in winter, the corner is sometimes flooded. It, it's an accident waiting to happen again because it's already happened, there's already been a serious incident in that location. Uh, yet this junction, the point of angst and, and danger at the best of times has been completely ignored in the traffic impact study that was produced for the developer and considered by the city staff. I understand that the plans for the project include, or could include ballers to prevent non-emergency traffic. But unless that interest is, entrance is fenced off from active transportation, uh, pedestrians or bicycles, et cetera. We know, we know that people will park adjacent to the entrance or walk in deliveries or make other quick visits to the property. Or they will use it as a quick shortstop to Young Street, I know I would, it's easier than taking the long route through Elgin Mills or along Oxford. In the traffic report in section three point two about active transportation, um, it says, since the proposed development will only utilize the sidewalks on Young Street, no improvements are necessary to accommodate the proposed development. Only on Young Street, so this project, which really pushes the use of active transportation rather than, than vehicles, they don't seem to expect that there's going to be any traffic coming out of that rear or foot traffic, uh, active transport out of that rear entrance. Um, the plan shows a two-meter footpath coming from the development, exiting onto the street at Arden Creekview. Onto the street, not, not onto a sidewalk, remember, because the sidewalk is across on the other side of the road. So this path, this path will funnel people, maybe children on scooters into the most vulnerable blind corner bend of the junction, right onto the road where it's difficult to see. And I made a note here, pause for effect, because, a- and I don't have a lot of time, so I won't pause, but, you know, think about it, this is really important. We have kids, uh, that will use this, adults, kids, anyone, it's a blind corner with cars, vehicles, so much going on. Nobody can see, no warning signs or anything, they could be running out to chase a ball. Um, we really want that? And, and by the way, there's a proposed park right there that the developer wants to put in. So there'll be children playing right there where all this is going on, huge safety concern. And to further prove that the danger has been completely overlooked, of the intersections around the project that have been de- that have a detailed traffic analysis, that junction, the Arden Creekview junction is not one of them. It wasn't even addressed in the entire study. Um, that intersection needs improvement right now, even before any project. But adding more foot traffic, more bicycle traffic, more drivers who want to bypass that Young Street U-turn, uh, to, to get into the building and use the Arden Creekview as a time-saving alternative, that's a recipe for disaster and danger and we know it, we all know it. We're there every day, we can see it, an entrance there would be convenient for the developer, no doubt, but would also be thoughtless and a result of poor planning at the expense of residents of Mill Pond. It must be fenced off, full stop, we gotta fence it up. Um, the diagrams and numbers don't tell that story. We're the storytellers here, please listen to us, don't sign off on this cha- chaotic plan as it is. We need assurances that this will not be a death trap. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Livingstone. Next on the speakers list is Mr. Mark Wen. Mr. Mark Wen, always a new audience, uh, please come up, uh, Mr. Wen, you have five minutes.
Uh, I have a picture to show, I send the pictures.
Oh, yeah, we're seeing it.
Uh, we're, we're gonna, okay, I can see the, can I, can I say it from my side? Okay, thank you. Hello, Mayor, Councillor and the neighbors, my name is Mark, I'm a resident living at Arton Avenue. Thank you for giving this opportunity to express my concerns on this proposed exit as a corner of Arton and the Creek. I oppose the emergency access as the corner of Arton and the Creek. There should be a fence or wall instead of an exit. Next slide. There is no one knows and understands the local traffic more than the people who living on Arton. The Arton and the Creek is not only used by the residents who living on this street. It's also used by other residents as the upper Mill Pond. When people go home afternoon, the traffic is coming from the east of Algen Mill because the highway four oh four is on that direction. They do not make left turn on the Young Street because the timing of the left signal is too short. They'd rather make left turn on, at a creek to save time because there is no traffic light at Algen Mill and the Creek. And then take Arton and then take Vominal, Vominal and then take Oxford Street to get home. In the morning, people go to work, work with that, they will take Arton, Creekview and get onto the Algen Mill. So the exit traffic, so, so the existing traffic on Arton at the Creekview is already very heavy from, from our daily experience. Next slide. Not to mention that Arton is not a straight road. There is a slight curve before making the turn from the Arton to the Creek. So you should not be able to see the upcoming cars in the other direction. What is looked like when you are Arton before making turn, let me show you a photo I took, next slide. You see the white building at the end of road, it's blocked by the curve and the trees. There is also a parking car on the su- parking car on the side of road that block some view as well. So you cannot even see the upcoming traffic well on the sunny day. Because there are obstructions by the curved road, trees and parked cars. Next slide. The developer want to add more obstruction to that corner. It proposed a two-point-one meter wide pedestrian walkway to the corner. And the proposed walkway is not directly connected to the existing straight walkway. People need to cross a street to take a walkway on the other side, on the street. The crossing happened right at the street corner, it's in a forty-five degree crossing, which bring additional traffic and obstruction to the corner. Next slide. The developer did not have enough parking space for both residential and commercial. Maturity unit are still at the one-bedroom, not all residents have a parking spot. What do you expect those people to take, go to work? With the current public transit is not mature enough, there is no subway street car near the tw- near, nearby in the future. You cannot design building which is a parking ratio like a one in downtown Toronto. If the residents need a car to drive to work, where do you expect them to park? In general, the commercial parking ratio is five to ten parking space per hundred square meters. You could not find this pub, you, you, you could find this public information online, but the proposed commercial parking rate is only two-point-eight. Next slide. You only have five retail parkings, where do you expect the store employees and the customer to park their cars? On Arton and the Creek? Next slide. Before making the turns, if I have more obstruction than before, if the residents needed to back up their car on the driveway and there are kids playing basketball in front of the house, it's too many obstruction on the street. Let me grab your attention, look at the middle of the road, can you see a red truck which is parked on the side of the road? No? Next slide. The photo was taken on July first, Canada Day, when the residents were holding a parking at home. It's not easy to drive on Arton with a parked car on the road. Next slide. In the past years, there were two accident happened at the corner of Arton Creekview, I'll finish. Right now, the screen showing a photo of one accident happened at this place. The SUV driver is one of a neighbor, she's familiar with the road, why did this happen on the sunny day? When the road, it was dry and the driver was familiar with the road, because this type of corner has a higher risk of accident road and it's called a blind corner.
Uh, Mr. Wen, uh, your time is up, are you, are you wrapping up now?
Yeah, so I'm opposed to emergency access as this corner, there should be a fence or wall to block additional traffic to prevent the problem get worse, getting worse.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, thanks very much, Mr. Wen. Uh, next I have the delegate, uh, registered to appear virtually, electronic, uh, Da Zhang Lu, and who is already, uh, seeing you coming on board, Mr. Lu. Uh, if you turn on, or turn on your microphone, uh, you have five minutes, Mr. Lu, welcome.
Yeah, okay, yeah, thanks, uh, thanks for the council to give me, uh, such, uh, this opportunity to uh, representation my, uh, objection to this project. Uh, I think, uh, firstly, from the planning view, uh, the, the existing zone by now, it's the height of this, uh, property is no more than twelve, uh, twelve stories. But, uh, they are developable, just to, I want to rejoin in for the twenty-five floor, uh, twenty-five story hybrid building, I think then it's over, from the point, my point of view, it's the over developable for this area because you know the existing building, the maximum height is no more than ten story. Yeah, so I, uh, I would like to, uh, ask their council to consider, consider their overall, uh, uh, heritage or property of Mill Pond and also the heritage, uh, building along the, uh, Young Street, uh, to, um, limit their, uh, height of this, uh, proposed building. Yeah, uh, this is, uh, from the planning view, and the second concern from my, uh, point of view is environmental, because you know, uh, this property is, uh, located in the TRC reg- regulated area. And also the proposed building is just in the flood, uh, flood plan, uh, flood hazard area and they, you know, uh, uh, in this area, uh, I, can I show my screen? Yeah, this, uh, here is a flood plan and this is a proposed, a proposed building. Uh, and this area is, uh, I, I think the, uh, the TRC use this area as, uh, stormwater uh, container area and if they are here, we built, uh, twenty-five story hybrid building and that should be a big concern for their, uh, for their neighborhood, uh, uh, waste the water, uh, waste the water management and also for their, um, for their, uh, for the resident in this building, should be a, should be a big problem. And there's third one is, uh, from my point of view is their transportation. Because you know, uh, their proposed building, their prop- proposed, uh, hybrid building, they have, uh, uh, they have the proposed, uh, uh, exit entrance, uh, for the pedestrian entrance in there in the Arton Street and there, uh, the city also want to increase this, uh, enable this into the road to their municipal road, so I think within this existing, their transportation of this Arton Road will be uh, big impacts within the develop of this project, you know, from their, um, from their, uh, proposed building, uh, proposed unit, they have around the uh, two hundred and fifty unit, but the parking space is, uh, nearly the same, so the ratio of the parking space is one, is only one to one, you know, for for most of their hybrid building, their parking ratio is no more than one one, one, one to one should be around the one to one point five, you so uh, generally their parking space is not enough to support such, uh, higher, uh, uh, higher density property, yes, that's from their and transportation and also from the parking, from the parking concern, I think if here is a pedestrian entrance in this area the reason in their proposed high risen tunnels will parking along the Arton Street and even along their, uh, uh, even along the other, uh, road of Mill Pond and that will, I think then will in a, in, in, in impacts their, uh, existing residents of the Mill Pond. Uh, generally, um, I, I, generally I want, uh, the council, um, re- respects their existing, existing residents in interest and consider their, uh, to control the over, uh, the, the hate of their, uh, proposed building. And based on that, uh, I think, you know, for the resoning, for the reason, proposed resending story, um, uh, I would like to, uh, object to twenty-five story, yeah, it should be respect the existing zone by now and the consider uh, the limited development, um, but not the over development of this project. Thank you, thank you for giving me this.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Lu, thank you. Uh, next, uh, I have Stephen New and Cindy Wang who have registered to speak electronically, virtually. Uh, they don't seem to be come on board, I will call it one more time, it's Stephen New and Cindy Wang. Not in chamber. So, um, if you're not here, I would have to turn to the next person on my list, the dedication. Sakaria Sadat. Who is also appears to be electronically, is yet to come online. I call it one more time. Sakaria Sadat. Neither in chamber nor appear electronically. No, um, it's, uh, each person has to register on their own and, uh, Mr. Wang, you already spoke, thank you. So, um, I would just call, uh, in this case, um, Mr. Kirk, um, we have gone through the proper procedure, uh, calling out the names at least twice, uh, neither in the chamber nor appear electronically, so on that basis, I would bring the matter to the committee and this particular proposed development is what for? I will turn to a local councillor. Thank you, Mr. Kirk, uh, I, I felt for the reminder, uh. Sorry, we, we're not conducting, uh, uh, a conversation here. Uh, calling to our dedication list, all those who are supposed to be speaking either in person or electronically have already spoken, uh, if they appear. And so this is not a matter of going back and forth, uh, and thank you, Mr. Kirk, and yes, uh, and we will be going by the order of the items, so the items being pulled is eleven point three. So on that note, I'm going to Councilor Michael Shear on the request for direction uh, on eleven point three, community pickleball hub planning, and then we come back to eleven point six. Councilor Michael Shu, please.
Thanks Chair, uh, I would like to, uh, express some opinions and comments on this, uh, community pickleball hub planning. Uh, firstly, uh, King's College Park is one of the dedicated, um, pickleball court in my ward located near Fanchao and, and, and Keel Gardens and Westminster's. And I've got a numbers of complaints regarding noise pollution. So I would like to ask if any noise and wind studies were conduct, were, uh, conduct before the installation of the court? Is any studies?
So, uh, Counselor Shear, you're not moving on a motion yet, but you're actually asking questions.
Yeah, just asking question, this is not a, it's not an amendment, yeah.
So question is about noise that I hear? So, uh, Commissioner Kwan, you want to answer that?
Um, thank you, um, through you, Mr. Chair, I have, um, planning staff, or sorry, design staff and park staff available. Um, we're not aware of specific issues about this specific location, but we can certainly take it under advisement and, uh, we would, uh, uh, get back to the local councillor.
Yep.
So, back to you, Counselor.
Yes, I, I do believe that there, there is a numbers of, uh, studies, uh, conduct before the installation of a court, but I'm wondering that why there are there are a numbers of complaints still. So, uh, considering the ongoing complaints, could the standards for the study be further enhanced to address this issue?
Is that question, yeah, Commissioner Kwan. Um, on, um, thank you, Mr. Chair, on a broader basis, certainly, staff are well aware of the ongoing issue of noise, it's, um, certainly been raised in other municipalities. Um, and we would certainly do our due diligence to ensure that the noise issue is addressed for all subsequent designs.
Commissioner.
Um, I have no question at all, but I, 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 I would like to make some comments, okay? Um, I'm aware of the pickleball debate that took place in the city of Ottawa in March this year. Where, uh, the neighbors expressed concern about the noise pollution due due to the city's decision to install ten courts in a single areas. So at last, the city has had to close the courts this summer following complaints that the residents claim playing pickleball court is louder, ten times louder, ten times louder than playing tennis. So in light of this, I would like to suggest that, uh, the city not to construct ten courts, more than ten courts in a single area, that's my suggestion. And also, uh, during my research, uh, I've realized that there's a type of paddle called the quiet paddle, quiet paddle, that can absorb the noise when hitting the ball. So I would like to suggest the city consider implementing restriction on paddle selection. Uh, we, we requiring, um, the players to use city designated paddle when playing pickleball in the future. And this may help minimize the, the noise issue and address the concern of the community, that's my suggestion.
Thank you, Counselor.
That's all my comments, thank you.
Uh, so, uh, we don't have a motion on the floor, but we, I do have a speakers list, uh, next is, uh, Councilor Karen Civiles.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, and thank you to, uh, my colleague, the local councillor, councillor Shu, um, for, for his comments. Um, I also want to thank staff here, very, very specifically. Um, as the chair of the DDO Park Steering, uh, Steering Committee, I, I am, uh, really, really pleased to see this report in front of us, it's what we asked for and we now have it, what, what's important about, um, about this report is in D where we are asking that there is a pause. That is the most important word in this entire, um, um, staff report. So why are we asking for a pause? We're asking for a pause because we needed to look at this in a much more strategic fashion. And that is why this report has come to us through planning. Um, and it has come straight to, uh, committee of the whole and will go to council, it will, it's not coming to the, to the, uh, the DDO Park Committee. Um, I agree with my colleague that noise is a, is a very, very specific concern when it comes to pickleball courts. Um, one of the one of the strategic issues that we have to look at here is how many courts should actually be built here? And should there perhaps be other sports facilities on the Panhandle? All of this will come about as we, as we have continued discussions and continued public engagement. Um, it's my understanding through discussions with staff that, um, the total number of pickleball courts for the city was, um, is was, was twenty. And we now have, um, we have more pickleball courts built at the time that that first report came out and, uh, and the parks planning report, and we also have pop-up courts at the Richmond Green and though the number of those courts have been, um, increased. So there's, there's a, it's not a flat line here, we see that there's a variation in how many pickleball courts actually exist in, in Richmond Hill, so that has to be, uh, very, very carefully looked at. And the other most important, um, issue that we have to look at is the budget. And this will, we will do this as we go through the twenty twenty-five capital budget. Uh, we will, uh, there will be a request, so that's not next year, but the following, a request to initiate the tennis and pickleball strategy. So there's a whole lot of moving pieces here that will have to come together before we can make any final decisions on what is going to happen at the Panhandle. Um, we are very much aware that there is an established neighborhood, uh, right next door, uh, to the Panhandle and, um, any noise, uh, any noise problems that could, uh, occur from a pickleball, um, uh, court hub there, no matter how many, must be addressed and I know that it will be. So, um, the other thing, the other thing about noise, um, is not ju, is not only, uh, for the neighborhood for the humans living in the neighborhood, the other issue with noise is for wildlife. And this particular Panhandle is part of the David Dunlop Observatory Park and it therefore sits right next door, a wild, wildlife corridor and a wildlife, um, wildlife park. And so we have to be, we have to make sure that we take into account what the noise from a pickleball court, an outdoor pickleball court would mean to, uh, any disturbance to the wildlife. I am confident that all of these matters will be discussed and the public is going to have, um, complete, open, accountable transparency here. There will be full public consultations again, uh, for this and for this particular matter and I, I am assured and I feel very confident because of this report and because of the discussions that I've had with staff, um, that are in two departments, that we will come to a decision here that is a decision that is comfortable for everybody. Nobody's ramming anything down anybody's throat, it's not the way we work. So, um, I think that's about all my comments, um, again, my thanks to all. And, um, this does come back to council next week. So, uh, there's another opportunity for, for residents to weigh in should they wish to do so. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, um, now, uh, Councilor Civiles, uh, would you like to move the recommendation from A to do, A to D, you make a comment to particular D?
Yes, I will move the recommendation.
Be moving motion, so, Mr. Kirk, we do have a motion on the table, uh, for rest of the members committee to ask question, comment on, um, next on my speakers list is, uh, Councilor Simon Chu, please.
Okay, thank you so much, Mr. Chair, I'll see you, you, Mr. Chair, to our staff, I do have a few questions. The first one is, uh, how many existing pickleball court in Richmond Hill? And how many new, um, pickleball court will be in school, will be in future?
Uh, because Commissioner Stew or Commissioner Kwan? Commissioner Kwan, please.
It's a chair redirect to Director Forrest.
Yes, Director Forrest, yeah.
Through you, Mr. Chair, um, the number of courts are in the report, but, um, just on quick estimate, we have approximately twenty currently, including the seasonal and, um, I believe an extra eight outdoor plant in the near future, um, in addition to the drop-in that is taking place indoors.
So couldn't it be twenty-eight in total, right?
Yes, once the plans are, are underway, I'm sorry, I, I don't have the exact figures in my mind, but we do have a considerable amount more than than, uh, was available when the initial direction was done to do the hub as well as when the parks plan was approved.
Okay, my second question regarding the tennis court, because they are a connected, associated. How many existing tennis court we have? Now, how many tennis courts will be in the school for future?
Uh, through the chair, Director Forrest.
Uh, through you, Mr. Chair, I don't have the number of tennis courts on me at the, at this time, we can get back to you.
Okay, my next question will be in the new design of the pickleball court. Uh, how many percentage of the court are the, uh, multifunctional means? Uh, it's not only dedicated for pickleball, but also can be used for tennis?
Director Forrest.
I believe we have, um, sorry, I'm just going through the report. We do have six dedicated pickleball courts and then four that are multi-lined for the short term in additional to the seasonal ones. You, but you're, you're asking, sorry, about the multi-line court.
Yeah, because, because when we design something, I, I hope it's multi, multifunctional in case people don't play pickleball sometimes, the tennis player can still play. So we have dedicated for, just for pickleball, I got it, but we have a mixed uses just in case, right?
Yes, that's correct, the multi-line courts, um, allow for both pickleball and tennis.
Okay, thank you, maybe those information can be shared in our reports as well, because I'm not only fine of the pickleball, but also I like to play tennis, so just curiosity and lots of tennis to the court, tennis players also engage me asking for those questions, appreciate, thanks.
Thank you, Director, thank you, Counselor Chu, uh, next on my speakers list is Mayor West, Mayor West, please.
Uh, thank you, uh, so, uh, we've talked about pickleball quite a bit and, um, in this motion that's before us right now, I think the meat and potatoes of this is, is D, as Counselor Sullivan said, that what we're suggesting is that we pause the, the, um, planning of the the pickleball courts that we, we had outlined at the Dunlop Observatory Park in order to make sure that we get all the details right and, and I, I think that's a very reasonable strategy. And, you know, given the number of challenges that I think we're learning, uh, as we go, uh, with pickleball, I think that's a very, uh, wise thing to do. There, there's definitely situations that have happened in other municipalities with the noise from pickleball and and making this type of, uh, facility, uh, really close to a neighborhood that's going to disturb the neighborhood that it's in proximity to is definitely not something we want to see happen. Uh, the, the, building a facility like this is not going to be inexpensive and we, we absolutely need to make sure we get this right. Uh, but on the other hand, uh, you know, we are, as we do so often here in, on council, trying to balance a number of competing interests. And there's no question in my mind, um, that, you know, pickleball is a growing sport. Uh, lots and lots of people are playing it for many reasons, which I won't bother getting into, because we've probably talked about this a few times before, um, but I think that we, you know, I think there is a, a demand, uh, that our residents have that we are, you know, looking to, to fulfill. Uh, there's a lot of, uh, you know, people that were playing tennis at one time that are, are moving to pickleball, probably because they're getting older. Uh, and I, I think that's a good thing, uh, for, for us to be doing with the, the demographic that we have in Richmond Hill and our aging community. I think one of the things that's important to remember and, and I had the opportunity over the, um, last week or so to visit the Richmond Lawn Tennis Club, which I've done in, in the past, and I think the what we're trying to produce here is a, is a club. It's a place where it's not just one court, it's a place where people can come together and play pickleball against each other in a court, uh, it's, right, in a club environment. Um, and, you know, this is not unheard of, uh, they do it in tennis, as I mentioned. Um, and I witnessed that when I visited them the other day and the value of that, but, you know, we also do that in other sports like hockey, ringette, you know, uh, baseball, you know, there, there is an opportunity at some point in most sports existence where people come together to compete against each other. So this is really what we're talking about here, we're not talking about adding X number of courts and having them live in a live in isolation. We're talking about building a critical mass of courts that can be used collectively for a slightly different use than you might play in a neighborhood park. So I'm pleased to see us pausing this to make sure that we're meeting the needs, that the investments that we ultimately are going to make are investments that serve our community very, very well. And again, we're balancing the the needs of the community. And I just had one little item too, that in the staff report, they're also talking about, you know, another balancing act that we're all doing here in municipalities across Ontario right now, which is, you know, trying to balance the cost of this. You know, this, this, like any facility, is not free. And we need to be able to meet the demand, but meet it in a cost-effective way. And, you know, the the question, and I, you know, we've heard from people you know, for and against this, the proposed location at the the Dunlop Park, that, you know, I mean, is the proposed number of pickleball courts that we have that we're going forward on, is that the right number or should it be less? And I mean, I think this is part of the process to make sure that we're putting in the right number of courts. So I'm totally in favor of this. I will say, though, that I would hope that staff can come back as quickly as possible with this final report, because I think, you know, we, there is a demand for this sport. And the longer that it takes for us to build it, the longer that some of that demand is going to go unfulfilled. Although I do, you know, I do appreciate the fact that we have other courts available right now. But I think that, you know, we are, we're trying to be seen as leaders in in, you know, providing the amenities for our residents, and that's, I'm sure what we're all interested in doing. So I think that, you know, the timeliness of this, we need to do this as quickly as we can and then bring it back and and get a an agreement on what ultimately should be built. So happy to support what we have in front of us.
Thank you, Mayor West. Next on my speaker's list is Counselor Davidson. Counselor Davidson, please.
Thank you. And through you, Mr. Chair, I, I want to say I, I like the idea of pausing this. We aren't just abandoning pickleball with building more courts at Richmond Green, which to me is the sports center of the city. It's the perfect place to at least start with more courts and reevaluate the DDO proposal. I also want to say, since this idea came, I think financial pressures on all municipalities have changed with new provincial guidelines. And we need to establish how we're going to spend our money. And also, who are we building these courts for? I get it's popular, but something called the Global Pickleball Network says that Richmond Hill Pickleball has network has a one thousand one hundred and fifty-two players in Richmond Hill. Six hundred and eighty-seven of them, or sixty percent, live in Richmond Hill. Four hundred and sixty-five players, or forty percent, live outside of Richmond Hill, being Vaughan, Markham or Toronto. And I'm not saying municipalities shouldn't share facilities. But the DDO is such a gem, we really need to pause and look at what is the best for all Richmond Hill residents in terms of utilizing that land. So I appreciate the pause and with the building of the new, with the pickleball courts at Richmond Green, hopefully that will be a good sort of solution as we figure this out. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Davidson. Any other members committee? No. Before I call the vote, I would like also to, my comments to the motion in front of us and also in the report. It certainly has been a learning process, and I'm speaking as a member of council. And whatever council would choose to do, either now in the future, I don't know whether it's proper, but we're trying to catch up because things have going on and evolving so rapidly, and not only Richmond Hill. And interestingly, Constituents talk about global. And this phenomenon on pickleball is really taking North America, as far as I know, by storm. I actually was at the indoor court just this past Sunday at the our community center on Sherridge Drive, Woodwoods. And it's packed. People have to wait and line up and have to register. And so it's a very popular spot for all ages. And so certainly, we are promoting age-friendly community. And again, the sport is for all ages and and it seems to be gaining popularity. And so, number one, I'm in support that, as the mayor just said, we want to do it right. Because whatever we do, that is something that we have to keep in mind, not only balance the players' needs and also, you know, fiscal responsible and put in manner. And also takes time to build those courts, right? And so taking a pause is actually sensible move at this point in time, because since the sixteen courts have been along the penemory concept, it seems to very quickly become polarized. That, you know, players on the community are for it, are for it, and the others are not. And I take comfort that the city throughout staff have been really working hard on trying to engage the public. And I've been sitting here for seventeen years now, and and I have to say for four hundred thirty-two people actually of local residents, all of the six hundred ninety responding online is very high number for all I've been seeing in the seventeen years. And and again, Counselor Davidson make a good point. Perhaps staff are looking at this direction, but also look at how our surrounding municipality are doing it. Is an opportunity that we can cross support in a way to governize or make some synergy, because, you know, people will travel across either from the east of four-four or the Asa Highway fifty to come over here. So there may be a way we can work work out some kind of arrangement. And last but not least, and I know this is talking about direction and and planning. And they've been talking about maybe the multi-lining, relining, if tennis, Badminton Court as well. One aspect, Congress, you mentioned about noise, I'm quite aware of it, because I believe the report mentioned it. The first two dedicated pickleball courts on King's College Park, that's in Ward Six. And I, I'm very sympathetic to Libby residents, myself, and when I was Ward Six Counselor with transportation or recreational staff, doing on parking, doing all kinds of noise mitigation. But at the end of the day, the noise is still there, and people are really keen to play. So perhaps one consideration is when we're looking at the whole planning. Residents have been asking, could they actually have the dedicated pickleball courts there to move to somewhere else and that that particular two courts be reconditioned to something else? On that note, I finish my comment and also staff to consider. There's no more comments. I'd like to call, oh, sorry, Mayor West for second round.
Sorry, I just, I just wanted to reiterate something and maybe expand on something I was, I think it's important for I I'm sharing this because this is something I'm starting to understand a little bit more in the in the thinking I've been doing since we've been talking about pickleball. But I think it's really important to understand that we share a lot of our recreational facilities with the rest of the GTA as well, right? So, I mean, and in our baseball diamonds on any given Sunday, you're going to have teams from outside of Richmond Hill. And that makes the competition for people that live in Richmond Hill that much richer. It's an important part of sport. We do the same thing with tournaments. I mean, I was at a ringette tournament in February, they have a big tournament, and we have teams coming from all over the province, in fact, all over the country. And, I mean, I'm not going to go into this at this point in time, but that's even, you know, a good thing for our economic development, given that we're going to get people going out for dinner in our community and all that stuff. And I'm not suggesting it's the same for pickleball, but I think what we need to be thinking about as we go through this. And and I'm sharing this with my colleagues is that recreational complexes that we build in Richmond Hill are not built walled off so that it's only for people in Richmond Hill to play. That would be not a rich experience whatsoever, but they're there to share. Now, I mean, mostly they're built for our residents, but the the fact that people from outside can come and play is important. And 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 by the way, it's a two-way street, right? I mean, like, we, you know, develop a relationship with somebody from, I don't know, pick a municipality, Vaughan, that plays pickleball with us. And maybe somebody from Richmond Hill gets invited to their municipality to play pickleball with their club. And that's the kind of program that we're looking to build. And I, you know, I see this in the tennis. And I think that there would be a lot of similarities between a tennis club and a pickleball club. So what we're planning on doing here is is, you know, not just for the casual player. It's for somebody that wants to have a, you know, richer experience. They've gotten maybe a little bit better at pickleball. They want to become a little bit more competitive and and play beyond, you know, the pond that they live in, so to speak. So I think that's important, and I know staff will look at that as we go forward and and give this a little bit more study. But I think that it's important that we start looking at at the fact that we're not just building it for our own people to use, but for other people in other parts of the GTA, for the most part, to use as well.
Thank you, Mayor, for that comment. And now, Mr. Kirk, we should just pay the recommendation from A to D moved by Counselor Karen Silverland. All those in favor? I'm happy to say, Mr. Kirk, carried unanimously. So moving forward, and now we have item number eleven-six that we have heard delegates, we have written submission as well. I'm now returning to Ward Four, Counselor. Counselor Chu is in Ward Four. The floor is yours.
Okay, thank you so much, Mr. Chair. First of all, I want to acknowledge all the great efforts from our city staff, our applicants, our council members, most importantly, from our residents. So I heard a lot of the good studies, research, and also a lot of deep thinking about this proposal. Actually, back to two years ago, when there was a twenty-eight floors proposal, I was there, I was just listening to the discussions. Personally, I went to Arton, also the Creekville Street, a lot. So I feel friends living on the street. So personally, I drove there, sometimes even ride the bicycle there, so I know the situations. For example, the neighbor has the bottom of the Creekville and also Arton. When the wall was was down from the plaza and the forest owner has been stolen for some other people, so the neighbor told me about that story. So I know fully know what happened over there. Also, I observed a school bus really parking on the street, right? It really blocked my vision as well. So I just want to summarize for my personal understanding here. And the location of this new proposal really sitting in a commercial areas. If you look at the entire street along Young Street, on the east side and west side, they're all commercials. They have plazas, used to be have no frills, drug drug smart art, oil stations, boarding station, et cetera. We don't have any residents there. This is the first proposal in that big block with residents proposal. And if you look at from the height perspective, from Sixteenth Street along Young, okay? Sixteenth Street until Bloomington, which is huge, half of our city. We don't have such high, high building at all. Along the sixteen, we have maybe twenty-two, twenty-four floors, and that's the south. If you look at north, we don't have such happiness at all. So especially for the KDA area of Agon Mills area. And the highest building now is the Mung San Senior House, around fourteen floors, as I can tell, right? If you go to north, we don't have such a happy now. So from the height perspective, I know it's along the Young Street, it's really Artree Street and also Agon Mills. Consider the heights perspective, this is really the fourth one I have experienced and seen. Except that KDA, so for not KDA is another story, I just park here. So for the proposal perspective, it might be the highest one I have ever seen. I do have concern about that. The second one, as regarding the traffic, I'm living very close to the street. Every morning I drive along the Young Street, send a case to Crosby and also Richmond High. You can see from the Agon West, West, Agon Mills, West Side, there's only one line. If you're traveling from the west, east side to west, along the Agon Mills, two lanes will merge to one line. During rush hours, how many hours, how many minutes you're going to pipe up there? Around the Arton Street and also Creekville, yes, that's a short pass for many, many residents living in the upper mill pond. So in the morning, sometimes I take that shortcut as well, if I want to go to the mill pond. So I can imagine how busy during rush hour, also the, in the morning or afternoon, how busy the traffic along the Arton Street. From existing perspective, Regent Street is not only the major one, but driving from there, oh, my goodness, it's really a lot of headache. Because down there, Regent Street, there is a public elementary school, you can imagine how busy the street will be. So, yeah, that do my concerns. Build up a high density building along Young Street is only one exit area, yeah, that could be lead a lot of traffic concerns. I echo an economic sheet concerns regarding to the traffic problem. Also, I want to summarize the next one is regarding to the safety issues that all the residents mentioned. The emergency exit from the high-proposed building to the Arden Street is really my concern as well. As I mentioned, I really be notified before this new new proposal. Then some residents has been stolen by some other people. There are so already wall built up, but still we have issues, right? If you open the gate and allow more residents come in and out without any monitoring, it might be leading the situation more worse. I want to add another one as well regarding to the safety of the geographic issues. I saw the map here. This street name is a Creekville. And they do have a lot of water issues or the flooding issues. And it's warning by the Toronto Conservancy already. So if you build up a high density building, a high height on this land. Yes, so, yes, the sediment issues, the flooding issues, gonna be a problem. If you look at area, we don't have any high buildings built up yet. So I'm going to hold a little bit for next round.
So you can come back second time, Counselor, if you wish. We don't have a motion on the floor. You're not moving it, are you? A motion? Are you moving a motion as recommended by staff on staff report page one and two?
So the moving is receiving, right?
No, 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 I refer clear. I say, are you prepared to move the motion as recommended by staff on page one and two on the staff report?
Yeah, I'm not ready to move.
Fair enough. That's fine. Thank you. So next, I have Regional Council DePaula, Regional Council Paul.
Thank you, Mr. Committee Chair. And for 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 many, many different reasons, I'll touch on a few of them. I'm, I'm happy to move the motion to to move the staff recommendations for for approval of this project as applied for on this site. Many, many, many reasons that our our staff have recommended this council approve the project and, you know, it's a regional corridor, a major transit station area. I'm very pleased with the progress that was made voluntarily by the by the applicants in in removing their initial plan. And this current revised edition is much more palatable. There's a podium reduction from six to four levels. There's an inclusion of a commercial component that wasn't existing in the in the original plan. And and I do understand the concerns expressed by the neighborhood. And this, this is a transitional time and it's a transitional period. There's, this is the first application that's essentially applying within this major transit station area. I have grave concerns, and I think we need to really hammer out what we're going to have in our official plan, because there's there's an Alga Mills and Young MTSA that extends south of this property, but then the the Crosby major transit station area, I think we 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 need to put heavy constraints on that. And I think it's important to protect the the character of the downtown village core. But but in my mind, this is, this is north of the historical village core. And we, we have to you know, compensate for maybe much lower heights and densities in that historic downtown center. So this project, if approved by council, it's two hundred and forty-seven units. Uh, it's two hundred and forty seven units. We need one hundred and ten more projects like this approved by this council in this term of council. In order for those units to be built within seven years to meet our housing pledge of twenty seven thousand units in Richmond Hill. So, uh, this is, this is the responsible growth. Uh, you know, obviously Young Bernard is our, our major key development area, but, but Young and Alga Mills uh, will also be transitioned to pedestrian friendly urban community. And uh, it's a huge change from, you know, I, I remember the city at twenty, twenty five thousand people and, and this was, um, this was the, the hub, the mall, the, 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 the shopping for part of Richmond Hill, uh, very different character. And, and that's not that long ago. That's, uh, you know, there's, there's been a lot of changes, but in, in Richmond Hill, but this is the beginning of a change in the Young and Alga Mills area. And, uh, you know, it's, it's happened through Richmond Hill, the southern end is, has experienced this change many, 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 many years ago and accepting the important regional corridor that Young Street is. And, um, I, I do want to address some of the concerns that the residents had with flood vulnerable areas and flood risk in the area. I really encourage people to read the flood risk assessment. Uh, as a layperson, you know, I, I was able to follow what, what's been proposed. And that risk assessment actually shows that there will be a decrease in, in the, in the risk of flooding in this area as a result of this application. And, you know, I, I am a, a layperson, but with, you know, it's twenty three years ago when I first sat on this council evaluating these, these types of plans. And I've seen a, a lot come forward and our, our ways of dealing with flood mitigation have, have improved drastically. This proposal is, is a, is a good example. And, uh, you know, I was concerned in general for Young and Alga Mills, uh, when it comes to flood mitigation. And I, I'm very satisfied that this applicant's done their homework and, and as this area improves, we will also have an approved situation in terms of flood mitigation. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Regional Council DePaula, and thank you for moving the motion and share your thoughts on this application. Next on my speakers list is Councilor Thompson. Councilor Thompson, please.
Thank you. Through the chair, I do want to also address some of the concerns that have been brought forward to us and make a few comments and ask a few questions of staff. It, one of the, one of the main things here seems to be the, the traffic affecting Arton and Crestview. And it seems, it seems to me that even if this development was not occurring, there seems to be a major concern there. So I guess my, my question to staff would be because this emergency access has come up as part of this particular project, does that mean that a traffic study would also extend into that particular area of, of Arton and Crestview?
Thank you, Councilor Thompson. Commissioner Quan, please.
Through you, Mr. Chair. I'll just give a high level preliminary response and then allow Director Kieszewski, who's also on the line to deal with the specifics. But in general terms, your comment is quite accurate, Councilor Thompson. Um, there is, there is no direct access from this project to the internal street network. The access proposed is for emergency purposes only. So there is no direct access and the background noise or infiltration has been addressed through the relevant traffic studies to determine the adequacy of the site and whether or not it's supportable within the existing arterial street network.
Thank you, Commissioner. Counselor?
So if I, if I understood correctly, then the study does extend into that arterial network then?
Um, through you, Mr. Chair. I'll let Director Tiershevsky respond to more, more detailed questions on the scope of the traffic study.
Yes, Director?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Yes. Uh, so, so the traffic study is really focused on, on, on the site itself. So it doesn't actually extend into the Arton Avenue area. There's no need for it because it's an emergency access. And so there is really no vehicular traffic intended to impact that area. So the scope would not have extended into that area. That being said, it did look at things like pedestrian connectivity for that neighborhood through the site.
Thank you. Counselor Thompson?
Yes, thank you for that answer. So that it does suggest to me that, uh, you know, and I'm speaking now to the residents that those concerns that you've raised about that particular blind corner, I, I think that's something where you may want to raise that on its own. So this is not specific to this application. If you have particular issues on traffic management right there, I think you need to raise that individually. So, um, I was, I was glad that, uh, uh, Regional Local Counselor DePaula mentioned about, uh, the flood remediation. I do have a question because a, a number of people have actually expressed a concern in regards to responsibility. And I did read the same thing that, you know, in terms that this should actually improve the, the situation there. But there's obviously a question about if something did occur, what, who has, or where would the responsibility lie? And typically, I believe those things would come with your own homeowner insurance. But if there's somebody who could speak to that, that would be appreciated.
Thank you. Looking for an answer, Councilor? Commissioner Quan, you can join help.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Again, at a high level, uh, in the event that there was some sort of catastrophic failure or onsite incident, um, you know, a further investigation would determine liability, but I can't, I don't want to speculate on, you know, the cause and effect at this point in time. Um, you know, that would happen in the due course of should that eventuality ever occur. But, um, from a technical support, from a technicality perspective of flood proofing, the Conservation Authority has already signed off. They're satisfied with preliminary flood remediation assessment. There's a detailed comment in the back of the staff report, which addresses all of those issues, including hydroge, flood remediation and that type of activity going forward. And then certainly through the more detailed site plan and building permit process, we would have even further detailed assessments on the flood remediation strategies on a construction basis going forward.
Thank you. Counselor Thompson?
Great. Uh, thank you. Um, there was also, uh, concerns that were mentioned about, um, uh, structural, uh, situations that have occurred with homeowners where, you know, without getting their own assessment done, but they know that there's been foundation issues that have occurred from other constructions and they believe that this would be related to the types of settlement that could be occurring in this area. Is there anybody who could speak to that? Is that something that, I mean, again, we're just, that's just a comment that was made, so I'm not really sure. Thank you.
Do you have one to ask a question or just a comment?
Uh, well, I guess if there is someone who can speak to that observation at all, that would be appreciated.
Thank you for clarifying that. Commissioner Quan?
Um, through you. Thank you for the question. That's through you, Mr. Chair. On page fifteen of the staff reported outlines, there's a paragraph there entitled construction and it deals with the requirement for, for all developers to have, or builders to have a construction management plan prior to the construction of their project, which deals with onsite activities, potential impacts to surrounding properties and, and risk mitigation.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. Finally, I just wanted to talk about height. I, I know that this has been a, a major concern for everybody. I understand that the fifteen stories that was originally adopted back in twenty ten, that was based on provincial policy statement, the growth plan, uh, the regional official plans that were in effect at that time. And that was in twenty ten. Since then, all of those have been updated. So the provincial policy statement, the growth plan, the regional official plan have all been updated. And what you will find is that, uh, this particular application meets with all of those uh, at this point in time. And that we're also going through the process of updating our official plan so that it aligns with those, with the policy statement, growth plan, the regional official plan. So it would make it very difficult to deny this application based on height. So it's just something to, to keep in mind. Um, uh, that's, uh, it's a, I know it's not what you want to hear, but that, that's what the situation is with the height. So thank you. Those are my comments.
Thank you very much, Counselor Thompson. Next, I have Mayor West. Mayor West, please.
Uh, thank you. Uh, so I, I want to thank all the residents for coming out today and, and, uh, you know, this has been a long road for them. Uh, and I've, I certainly appreciated last night, uh, being able to meet with a, a number of you. And, um, you know, we were able to have a, a very good conversation, I think. And, and in that conversation, I think I, I was tried to elaborate on some of the things that I probably won't have time to go into too much detail today. But I think, you know, uh, this application in an ideal world, I think maybe still a little bit higher than I would like it to, to be. And, uh, but I think that at the end of the day, um, you know, building on what Councilor Thompson was saying, you know, the provincial regulations and, and the Planning Act and so on have certainly changed a lot since the two thousand and ten official plan was passed. And I, you know, through the, the recommendation that we have in front of us from staff, it's pretty clear that the thorough analysis that staff has done would indicate that this is probably, um, an application that, uh, we could approve and it would be consistent with all of those plans. Um, so, you know, a couple of things that I think are important to remember is, you know, we do have housing targets that we are obliged, whether we like it or not, uh, to meet in, in Richmond Hill. This certainly will help to, to meet that housing target. It won't on its own achieve the targets, but it certainly will be some step in, in that direction. And I also appreciate in the staff report that there is, um, a mention about affordability. I mean, the people that are going to be living in, in apartments such as this are, you know, are, are children, some maybe are old, some older people in the neighborhood that are wanting to downsize but stay on Richmond Hill. These are the kinds of, of neighbors that we can expect, um, to live in buildings like this. So I think this is important. I mean, there are, this meets a, a community need and, and it's in a place that is on a major transit station area and a transit corridor. So it, it is, in my opinion, the best type of place, uh, to meet that need. Um, I, I will say that I do appreciate the fact that, you know, we have come down a bit and improved this since the original submission. Uh, the twenty eight stories is now twenty five, but keeping in mind that two of those stories are parking now. Uh, and what the ground floor is commercial, which I think is really important. So one of the, the other things that came up quite a bit in our discussions last night with the residents and here again today is the whole idea of access through this site. Um, you know, this is, we don't build communities that are fenced off. I mean, we're not building gated communities. We want permeability for people to be able to move around. Um, there is no vehicular access through this, um, site, which is, was a very important for me when I first started dealing with this as the Ward four counselor. That's a nonstarter. We've addressed that. So there's only in the case of a significant emergency would any vehicle ever be traversing the site. But there is, um, the possibility of people living in that building to access the neighborhood and from people that live in the neighborhood, access Young Street through that area. Um, it is important to keep in mind, and I talked to the, to the residents about this last night, that the actual details of that access or how much of access we're going to achieve there or whatever is, will happen through the site plan process. And that still hasn't happened yet, but that will be coming as, as a next step after something like this would get approved. Um, but generally speaking, I mean, I think it's clear that, that, you know, it's a two way street and, and having, um, you know, walled off areas of the community is not the kind of community that we generally are, are trying to achieve. But again, I'll, you know, certainly we'll be all speaking to staff about this and finding out exactly what that looks like. The other thing that I think is important in the short term I have left is the intersection at Creekview and Arton. It is a somewhat, well, it's not even an intersection. It's a, it's a right angle turn. It's a, it's an unusual, um, road condition for sure. And I think that what we need to do as we go forward through the site plan process and through any other approvals that happen with this application is to take a look at that corner because there may be things that, and that, that we could do to improve the safety and the permeability of that actual corner. And if there is going to be people crossing the road there, I think the first step that we probably need to look at is the parking situation in and around that, that right angle corner. So I, I would hope that staff will, will look at that and I will be looking for that evidence as we move forward with this. Um, so I've just, I'm out of time, but I, I think that I can support this, uh, application. Um, and, and I appreciate, as I said, I appreciate the residents coming out and expressing their opinion on this and, and the other members of council as well. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Mayor West, right on time. And next on the speaker list is Councilor Karen Civiles. Ms. Civiles?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, first of all, I want to thank staff for their comprehensive, um, staff report in front of us today. Um, and I want to thank the local counselor, Councilor Tree for very diligently dealing with the situation and, and with the residents who have every right to be upset. However, we are living in different times. Um, there are a few questions I wish to ask, but I will, I will preface what I'm going to, going to ask the questions with what I'm about to say. The elephant in the room here is the provincial land tribunal. And the other elephant in the room here is, are the provincial guidelines to which we must comply. And as has been said by my colleagues before, in twenty ten, we were living in a completely different era. Twenty twenty three, we are living in a completely different era. Everything has changed and everything changed with the Ford government's Bill twenty three and Bill one oh nine that have created immense pressures on municipalities in order for us to reach our housing targets, as was mentioned by the mayor. What needs to be really understood here is that this is a Young Street property. Its address is ten six eight four and ten six nine two Young Street. Because of that, this property will be regulated by the, by the mandates that the provincial government have put towards growing our city and growing our, our province and growing our housing targets. So it's very important for the residents to understand. And I get this all the time in Ward five with the Young Street corridor as well, that runs from basically Garden to Major McKenzie. Same issues all the time. Every single thing is the same. But it is of the utmost importance that the residents understand that if we deny this application, the applicant will have the right to go to the Ontario Land Tribunal. We will not be able to defend this because we are going against staff recommendations. This is a very complicated issue here. Therefore, staff couldn't represent the city at that O L T hearing. And I can guarantee you, the Ontario Land Tribunal will give this developer exactly what they want. Would I prefer to see a twenty, a fifteen story building here? Absolutely. Does a twenty five story building here fit? Yes. It's, it's complies with the provincial plan and it complies with the, uh, even more importantly, it complies with, um, the regional official plan. But the province is the chief here. They, they have say with everything. So I am always the first one, as far as I'm concerned, to speak out against overdevelopment. Anyone who knows me knows. to speak out against overdevelopment. Anyone who knows me knows that. You cannot class this on Young Street, on the transit corridor, within an MTSA area as overdevelopment. It just isn't. And those are very, very hard and difficult facts for our residents and for us as a council to accept. And sometimes we have to make very difficult decisions. This is one of them. There's a couple of questions I would like to ask, and I may have to go into a second round, and that's fine. Mr. Zhang brought up the issue of the drinking water. To you, Mr. Chair, to our Commissioner, can you please explain to us how a development such as this will or will not affect the city's drinking water?
Thank you for the question. Commissioner Kwong?
Through you, Mr. Chair. I'm not the engineer, but the high-level answer would be that the city is entirely supplied by municipal water. It's like basted from Lake Ontario. And so there would be, there are no private wells in the area, which I would expect would be the only impact if there was to be one. So there would be some confirmation from an engineer, no direct impact on the municipal water supply.
Thank you, Commissioner. Appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Chair. One further question, I believe, through you to the commissioner as well. There was a question regarding, or concerns regarding infrastructure, that we do not have the infrastructure in place to support this type of build-out. Can you comment, Mr. Commissioner, on that and the fact that it's the region that supplies all this type of infrastructure, not the municipality?
Commissioner Kwong, please.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Yes, the large hard services are supplied by the region, the sanitary sewers, but they're certainly managed by the local municipality and allocated for distribution for construction by the, by this council. There is, of course, the local infrastructure, like sidewalks and other things, but generally the hard infrastructure in order to accommodate this project as well within the existing capacity of the system.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Commissioner. I'm just watching my time here. I'll wait for the second round, Mr. Chair, to address my other, my other concerns or questions.
Thank you, Counselor. Next, I have Counselor Davidson. Counselor Davidson, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I have a question for staff. Forgive me if I just didn't read the report properly, but the panhandle or the handle of the cleaver of the overview of this property, the long piece that heads towards Creekview, is, what is that? What is that? Townhouses? Is that commercial?
Commissioner Kwong, I see that, and handle on each two as well.
Through you, Mr. Chair. That surface parking has also provides a driveway for the emergency access out to Creekview.
So that whole strip is asphalt?
Correct.
That's disappointing, and I have to say, I understand there's need for parking for a building this size. And obviously, the developer has no, no need to heed my request, but it would be really fantastic if they could somehow half that or figure something out and provide the existing neighborhood with park from even halfway down over to Arden and Creekview. I think it would help for us all to work together and be together on this, this development, which is upsetting, obviously, some existing residents. This was a fish, this began as a rental building, and now there's going to be condos. Can I ask, through the chair, is there a mechanism to prevent investors from buying the affordable condo units and then renting them out as, as market value? Where is the affordable part protected here?
Commissioner, can you help with this question?
Through you, Mr. Chair. A lot of those details will be worked out through the follow-up site plan to come. And the rental accommodations or the affordability, depending upon the approach the developer wants to take, would be secured through deferral agreements with both the city and the region. But I have planning staff available to provide a little further detail if you'd like through Manager Di Maria.
Thank you. I would appreciate that. I don't know what you just said about the deferral agreement with the region. I just want to know, are 111 units going to be affordable or not? And if, if this building is completely condo, what's to stop anyone from buying them and putting them up for rent at a much higher value? Or is it partial condo, partial rental? I'm a bit confused. I'd love clarification. Thank you.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Counselor Davidson, the short answer is, the developer has committed to providing us with 111 affordable units at a condo market, affordable from the condo market value. But you are correct. In terms of controlling who's to purchase those, there would be no real mechanism for the city to control that. We would, obviously, we do monitor that through the site plan approval process. We also have ways for us to monitor that through MPAC, through the region. If it were rental, they would apply through the region for the development charge deferral program. But right now, we will work with the applicant to ensure that they have those units at a market value. But there is no way, really, the short answer, to control who's purchasing them.
Thank you, Manager.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. So really, the affordability is only for the person who can afford the condo first time it's offered, and then there's no controls whatsoever to keep anything affordable. Is that?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Actually, the city, we are working through our affordable housing strategy to address that issue, because that is an issue that's been addressed, it's been identified, and we are looking at ways to enforce that and to control that issue. But at this time, there is nothing in place.
Thank you again.
Thank you. And through you, Mr. Chair, is, is calling 111 units affordable? Was any financial accommodation given to this developer in terms of, you know, deferred DC charges or anything? Did they ask for anything, or is it all just like any other development that is not affordable?
Manager?
Through you, Mr. Chair. At this time, they've committed to it, and we will look to implement that through the site plan approval. But at this time, there is, there is nothing, that they haven't applied for any deferral program at this time. Thank you. That's all.
Thank you. If there are no other persons on the committee who want to make first-round comment, I see that is interesting. Second round, I would like to add my comments as well. First of all, I like to thank you for all the delegates who are here actually in person, as well as those appear visually, virtually. And I do understand the concern. I hear very clearly the concern, which is actually expressed previously in council public meeting back a couple of years ago, on the height, on the concern about the traffic, as well as the other things which lead to my question about the flood plain, as well as on, I believe, his concern about noise. And that would be something about site plan that we'll be getting into. But my colleagues also have mentioned that the basis on which that for assessment have shifted dramatically, never mind 2010 to 2023. And my colleagues have mentioned it, the Lawrence on Terror at this time, I think hardly we do not hear on the news that 1.5 million homes to be built in, by 2031. No longer 10 years, only eight years. And every municipality in the GTA is asked to do our share, and Richmond Hill, like many other municipalities, make our pledge, 27,000 units to be built. Having said that, I do understand. And for example, on Young Street, I believe, some of my colleagues mentioned, in fact, there are way over 40 stories on Young Street. It had been approved by Ontario Land Tribunal, and some are still at the Land Tribunal. So the landscape is quickly shifting, changing. I know it's discomfort. However, this, again, is the reality. This is happening on the Young Street corridor. Now, that leads to my concern. I think I'm glad to hear from a traffic standpoint, there was no particular immediate impact on the infiltration onto the Arden Street, Arden Avenue. It's only for emergency vehicles. I got that. My question, I think, is also raised by delegate. From a 10-meter buffer that would due to zero, I saw what the report is seeing. I just want to, just making sure I understand it correctly. To maybe the Commissioner Kwong, can you help me maybe recap very briefly? What are the mitigation criteria or measures that might be proposed that actually satisfy from moving from 10 meter to zero? I think that's, some of us are looking for answers more clearly. Yeah, we all get rid of reports. But as a technical person, if you can help, still give us the degree of comfort. Thank you.
Through you, Mr. Chair. I'll start off again, and then I'll perhaps redirect to Manager Di Maria. The Conservation Authority and city staff have reviewed the matter and are satisfied with the flood remediation assessment that the applicant has studied. They have submitted to ensure that there would be adequate flood proofing of the new buildings and to ensure that they meet the standards, the flood criteria of the authority going forward. And those details would be confirmed through the site plan and building processes moving forward. But at this point, there's sufficient proof that the project can move forward appropriately with, by, through the reduction of the buffer to zero.
Thank you. Okay, the other point that I want to mention is brought up actually by Counselor Davidson. I have to say, when I'm reading the report, I for one, I don't know, members of committee, is I see that 111 units, which is over 40%, would be 45% actually be considered as proposed to be affordable. But I think Counselor Davidson's point is taken. That's at the time approval and some kind of measures to help to ensure that actually it would really happen at the end of the day. So anytime, maybe during the site plan agreement or any agreement, we'll be entering to the proposed. The applicant need to make it clear that is indeed the case. But I think it's commendable. 45% I think is not only medium minimum, but exceeding that. So on that note, I have to say, and I think Counselor Siviris make a very good point, looking at what would be the realistic outcome, alternative at the end of today. For council, for example, or committee at this time, not to recommend or council makes it not to approve, there's an avenue that the avenue will go to until Land Tribunal. It would mean very, very, very difficult for council or city to really defend. And in fact, it's staff is saying, yeah, 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 yeah. So I think that's a reality, and under the circumstances, given that it's going to knock to traffic infiltration into the internal street, given that the staff also saying that mitigation or satisfy with the other, the flood plain, and so on, so on. One last point is that during the site plan, I'm very mindful about the crane management because we're probably swinging around, and if I were living in a neighborhood, I'll be really concerned. So I'm sure the applicant will do measures, but I think this is something very important. On that note, I'm out of time. Any person want to speak second round? Yes, Counselor Siviris, and then Counselor Tree. Counselor Siviris first.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to continue on what I was saying for, hopefully, in the next five minutes. Thank you, Mr. Chair, for bringing up the TRCA and the zero buffer issue. I too would prefer to see at least a five-meter buffer there, if not 30, which is what we hope for. But the TRCA is the authority, not us. And if the TR, the regulating authority, and if the TRCA in this report has signed off on a zero buffer, you can be assured that that decision is made absolutely with good engineering and technical advice. There is no way the TRCA would sign off on anything that they do not approve of. The other issue I want to talk about is the parking standard. There's been a number of, a number of residents were concerned that there's not enough parking for the amount of units in this building and perhaps the commercial uses. Through you, Mr. Chair, to, to the Commissioner or to Ms. Di Maria. Does this particular application meet our current parking standards?
Commissioner Kwong, you wanted to begin?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Staff are satisfied about the parking arrangements, but I'll allow Director Chershevsky to address the details.
Thank you. Counselor?
Oh, thank you. Sure. Go ahead, Director.
Through you, Mr. Chair. So they generally do meet our 2010 parking strategy, parking rates in this area.
Thank you. This is a concern that I hear as well from any applications in Ward Five along Young Street. What we have to start visualizing is that even that, because parking standards have also been lowered, so you see less parking for more cars, because we're trying to get the cars off the road. So if you have, and that's probably not in our time, but hopefully, it will be in the next 40 to 50 years that we can get more and more cars off the road. Therefore, the parking standards have been lowered. I'm as concerned as, as all the residents are and the local councillor about this emergency access onto Arden Creekview. However, I, I am also, I also feel confident that the manner in which this has been presented here in this particular staff report would protect any kind of vehicular infiltration into that particular part of the subdivision. As was said before, we'll see more of that at site plan. And once again, at site plan, the residents have, have the right to step forward and, and speak to the site plan. The other thing that I want to mention is, it's very interesting that Creekview-Arden bend is very similar to what we have in Ward Five at Harding and Lennox. In fact, it's almost identical. The only difference is that it's actually, there's a park right there as well, as you go from Harding onto Lennox. And as Mr. Chershevsky and other members of our Traffic and Roads and Staff and YRP can attest to, that we have looked into how we can make this bend safer for vehicular travel, for pedestrians, and for everybody who lives there as well. So I urge the local councillor to speak with, with Mr. Chershevsky, with Roads, Hubert Ng, and Traffic, and in this, on a separate, in a separate matter, to address the problems and your, excuse me, your, so I don't remember your name, but the man in the, in the blue shirt, you, thank you very much for those photographs because they were critical. And that, that is, that is something that must be addressed as a separate issue. Because as was said before, it's not, it's not considered part of this plan. And I'm sure that Councillor Tree will be able to do that. And you'll, maybe you'll be able to find that there are remediations that can be done at that particular bend or on Arden and Creekview that can hopefully try and prevent any further tragedies from happening there. And lastly, I just want to say that, again, I always say when we're speaking about a very difficult application such as this, if not here, where? If not putting this 25-story building here on Young Street, where would it go? We certainly don't want it inside the neighborhood. It has to be on the transit corridor. So again, my thanks, my thanks to the residents. We are living in a transitional period, and it is very difficult. It's very difficult for you, and it's very difficult for us as your councillor and your elected representatives. But as I said before, the recommendations that are before us are are sorry, the staff recommendations before us say to be approved. And unfortunately, given certain circumstances that are out of our control, I will support the recommendations.
Thank you. Commissioner Tree, please.
Thank you so much. So I do have two questions left over. The first one is for our staff. I see the F S I, this line is three point five. If you convert to a people per acre, what as approximately, how many people per acre if you have the F S I three point five?
To, I guess, Commissioner Kwong or?
Our manager is familiar with this.
Through you, Mr. Chair, to Commissioner Tree. I don't have that actual information right now. I could do a quick calculation for you based on the acreage of the property and the number of units. We could quickly calculate that for you. So if you just give me a moment, I can do that for you. Okay, I can take your next question.
Next one is for our applicants. Okay, yeah, please give me the answer. The next one is for our applicants. I know we had a lot of meetings between applicants and also city staff. For me, I listened to your meetings around two years ago, but I was only a resident over there. So I think you're not only proposing only one project. Maybe in future, in Richmond Hill, you have more and more projects similar like this. So my suggestions for our applicants is communication is the key. So if you have a type of the presentations or proposals you want to build up, whatever, which word, it's best ways to connect with the local councillors, express what you're planning to do. And meantime, because we know our residents very well, so this way, as a councillor, I would like to maybe build up bridges. So from one side, applicants here from other than communities here, so we can have a lot of internal communications, discussions. And if there is any demanding from residents, this way you know what happening. Before you submit your proposal, this way you understand what exactly in the communities. This way, you present something in the council members. It's already majority, your proposal has been great, mutually great between yourself and also the residents. So when the proposal comes to the City Hall, it's easier for councillors to balance, to make decisions like this situations. And you talk with a lot of these other city staff, really appreciate this good, good approach. But in time, I think we got lack of the voice from residents. This time being, you can see in, when we sitting in City Hall, lots of residents see different things compared to your proposal. So I hope in future, if you have more and more projects coming, maybe better ways, let's talk about before we make a decision. So I know the process may be long, and if you do a lot of homework, there'll be less headache for everybody. That is my suggestion for our applicants.
Thank you for your comment, Commissioner. And I don't know whether Manager Di Maria, you have the numbers, the country is looking for. If you do, please come forward.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Tree, the units per hectare would be four hundred and forty-nine approximately, so per hectare, if we did a calculation of number of units per hectare.
Yeah, if I remember correctly, for the MTS A regarding to the corridor, Agamius, and also Young Street, I think that number is one hundred and sixty, something like that.
Through you, Mr. Chair, that would be one hundred and sixty people and like people per hectare and places of employment, yes.
Okay, so actually, this proposal, yeah, they did meet the minimum requirement, actually around two or three times above that, if I'm my correct, right?
Through you, Mr. Chair. That's a target, and it's for a larger area. So this would be per hectare. There, it's one hundred and sixty persons and places, people per hectare. So it would be for a larger general area. So this would help to contribute to that target for this area.
Okay, perfect. Because I know we have a lot of commercial area there, area there, definitely the densities or the four acre number will be definitely not that high just for consider specific here. I got it. Thank you so much. Yeah, I don't have further questions. Thank you.
Thank you. So this time, there's no others for second round comment. And I would like to call for the vote. Mr. Kirk, you mind to display it? And it's very clear, six points on page two, basically, on the report A. But just to, on page four, outline the history, this particular application, the first at this same council chamber, September twenty-third, twenty twenty. So it's been three years, well, two and a half years, kind of in the making. Okay, so all those in favor from A one to six? Oppose? Carry?
You know, Mr. Clerk, I think this is probably need a recorded vote on this.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, recall the vote has been asked. Recall the vote.
Thank you. Through the chair, voting on the motion moved by Regional and Local Councillor De Paula, Mayor West.
Yes.
Thank you. Councillor Liu is absent. Councillor Davidson?
Yes.
Thank you. Regional Local Councillor Chan?
Yes.
Thank you. Councillor Silivitz?
Yes.
Thank you. Regional Local Councillor De Paula?
Yes.
Thank you. Councillor Xu?
Yes.
Thank you. Councillor Tree?
No.
Thank you. Councillor Thompson?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion carries only.
Thank you, Mr. Kirk. So we complete this particular item. And I would say that all the other items have been adopted by consent earlier. We have no other business, no emergency time says it matters, no closed sessions. And before I call for the motion for adjournment, I'd like to say this is my term as the Chair of this Committee of the Whole. As Chair, I want to take the opportunity to thank my colleagues for their support. In particular, Madam City Manager, Mr. Kirk and his team, also City Service and the team, and actually, everybody involved here. Thank you so much. It has been a very fulfilling, rewarding, five-month journey. So the next person is, I wish the person the best. You will get a break in the month of August, so look forward to the first Committee of the Whole meeting other than the next council meeting next week in September. So on that note, could I entertain a motion of adjournment? Commissioner Davidson, any discussion? No? All those in favor? Carry unanimously. I have to feel like it, used this for the first time.